Any other comments or questions from the committee? Phil, you're quiet. Okay, at this time I'll entertain some comments from the audience. Come to the mic. Just state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Susan Lucia from 8 Porter Street in Wyndham. So I'm a resident, I'm also a teacher at Cutler School. And I have to say, most of the elementary teachers are just becoming aware of this new plan this week, and a lot of teachers were just hearing about it today. I wanted to talk a little bit about, I'm gonna start with the math statistics that Dr. Harvey quoted. As you can see, he told us at a meeting I was at, that we're in the top 1% in math in elementary, and that's with the current model, working with a curriculum coach. And I've really enjoyed working with the curriculum coach. She's done a lot of work for us, she's been helpful. But I think the credit goes to the teachers first, and I don't think this is, and I think it sounds like it's all the curriculum coach that's doing this. And if this is a model that's working, why do we want to change it? And now bring in somebody who's an administrator? I think part of the reason it works is because she is a coach with us, we consider her a peer, and it's worked really well. I also want to talk about the idea that some schools have worked more with her than others. Everybody has worked with a curriculum coach, and there are members of the task force from all three schools, it's not one school. I am not on that task force, but I am a 5th grade teacher at Cutler, and I would, I think that, I don't think we should look at the schools because of who's working more with the curriculum coach, because she has worked with all three schools. So, as a taxpayer, I don't want to see more money spent on administrators when we have a model that's working really well right now. I also, there are leaders in English Language Arts at each school. I'm not sure I have the exact title, whether they're called coaches, curriculum leaders, but we have a leader at all three schools that works with us on curriculum and Language Arts, and supports all the teachers in Language Arts. And we don't need an administrator to come in and take the role. From my understanding, and maybe this can be clarified, is that we're gonna still have those three positions, and then somebody was gonna be in charge of them. It seems to be working the way it is now, as far as I can see. And again, as a taxpayer, I don't want to see us become a district that's top-heavy. Let me just check if there's something else I want to say.
My name is Charlie Pepler, 53 Meyer Road in Hamilton. I would, just as a businessperson in general, looking at the balance of administration versus value-add, I think last time we talked about sort of the magic of teaching, and the, you know, the connection point that really occurs between students and teachers. And it seems that, in a case where you are adding administration, administrators to collect data for alignment to something which is called Common Core, that has been running into a lot of headwinds, not just, you know, in this location, but around the country, seems that you may lose some of that magic if you do start changing the ratio, because if this is a net zero sum, if you're taking away from teachers, you are adding administrations to align to something which is already having a fair amount of headway. I think there might be some, you know, some concern in that particular area. And I did hope that, you know, perhaps if, talking to some of the other districts, what they're doing with the concept of Common Core, might be a good idea to share amongst some of them, to find out if they're there, and there's a gentleman, Dave McGinnity, if he has a chance to come up, who might be able to share some experience from another district. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ruth Collins from 74 Blueberry Lane in Hamilton. I'm just, I've had a, I had a daughter who started in 2000 in the high school, and now I have more girls in the high school, so I've seen a lot of changes in 14 years. And I understand some of them are federal and state regulations, and economic, that are out of our control. But as we move toward a more test-centric environment, I feel really concerned to see this. One, it's very expensive. Two, it's fickle. Three, I work in higher ed now, I've left public education because it is actually a lot of hard work, and I've worked in ESL for 10 years, so I have international students for the last 10 years, who come from all those countries that the media loves to cite as the best math countries in the world. They come to America to learn how to be innovative, critical thinkers, and non-literal thinkers. They do not know how to do this, they tell me every day. They are taught how to memorize, and they are brilliant at it. And they come here, and they don't know how to learn. And that's not to say they're not brilliant and wonderful children, or now adults, but they have to learn an entirely new way of learning. And that is what our schools are so brilliant at. And I know from 14 years of experience, that's what our teachers in this school district are so brilliant at. And when we become a test-centric, administrative-heavy school district, we are putting that in jeopardy. And our style of education that really is the best style in the world. Thank you. Oh, and I have a question. Are we gonna lose teachers with these new jobs? Will that cut into a teacher position? That's my question. Thank you.
Hello, Deb Clapp, Science at the High School. I'm sitting here, and having some numbers is great, I agree with the more data, I mean, we're supposed to be trending over three years, that's where our whole DDM thing comes in, where we're supposed to collect data personally for our teaching. My question is, I don't know how much the three salaries are gonna cost, like, what is the total? And with the FY '15 budget set, I'm still unsure where that money's coming from. So I am concerned about staff cuts for sure. And I just think that coming up creatively with finding out where there's excess, it kind of scares me. And I would just urge the group, again, to postpone until we have more information. If that, if we know exactly where those funds are coming from, I think it would make everybody feel a little bit better. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bridget O'Donnell, I live at 105 Main Street. I'm also a teacher here, and I have a student, a student at Cutler. I'm one of the people that's on the math task force, and I have been for, it'll be a year this summer. And I can speak for my grade level, and I'm sure all the teachers that have been working on this math this year. We all, because it's really the people that are coming up with the curriculum, reviewing the curriculum, and teaching the curriculum, and getting creative with the curriculum. And I, and I do support the Common Core. I think it's, it is, has very great depth, and our children have so much more time to learn the things that we are teaching them, they don't have to be rushed through everything. And I think it'll, you know, show itself as it goes down the road. But I feel like we've been doing some excellent work as a district, and I would rather see funds, and I express this to Mr. Harvey, is, you know, maybe hire some curriculum writers to kind of help the teachers with the load, because that's what we're gonna have to do, as far as I know, because there's nothing off the shelf that's ready to go.
I'm Alison Preston, I live at 22 Parkin Street, and I just wanna say something that I said to Mr. O'Donohue a while back about these MCAS scores. The goal is great, let's make our scores go up, we want to be the best school, everybody wants that, right? But these kids are not like bacteria in a Petri dish that are gonna reproduce an X-number every day for the next, you know, whatever. They're kids, there's a bell curve of humanity, and you just can't, I just, I just want to caution and echo what you said, Mrs. McDonough. You can't, it's hard to make these decisions based on like a few test scores, because education, you know, you gotta look at our high school kids going to college, like, that's how you're gonna measure what these third and second, third and fourth graders are doing. Not like this week, next month, next year. It's, who are they gonna be when they graduate and leave and become adults, you know? I feel like one little test score is just not enough of a measure to make a big decision like this, that may cut staff. So that's-
Thank you.
Good evening. I was invited here by Charlie Pepler, and it's an honor to be in front of you. I'm actually a lifetime achievement-
Did your name-
Dave McGinnity, PBD School Committee. And I'm actually, five years ago I received a lifetime achievement award for the Math Association of School Committee members, which is usually their way of saying it's time to go. But I'm still here. And, and I'm here this evening because of the issue of Common Core. And I respect you all and the jobs you do, far too much for me to lecture you about this. But I, I would only tell you that if you don't know everything there is to know about Common Core, PARC, and the like, you need to know that, as a primary duty. All the other things, all the great discussions that are taking place tonight, it's really like talking about renovating your kitchen while your house is on fire. The Common Core is, I don't care for it, obviously. I think it's all, it has very little to do about education, and a lot to do about amassing money and power. And Massachusetts, I don't have to tell you this, is the top state in the country, right, for education, has been for five, five testing cycles, a NEEP. No state had ever tested, number one, on both segments of the NEEP test until 2005, and Massachusetts has done it five testing cycles since. If Massachusetts, on the TMS test, Massachusetts rates among the top countries in the world in science. If there was one state in the country that was going to reject Common Core, it should have been Massachusetts. Race to the top really was a race to become Massachusetts. Right? The problem is, the fix is in. This game is rigged. The leaders in Massachusetts are on the payroll of PARC and ACHIEVE. The man who's, who is the architect of Common Core is now running the SAT. The SAT has just lowered their standards to accommodate the Common Core standards. Be skeptical. Be skeptical, folks. Do your homework. I know very intelligent people who have looked at Common Core thoroughly and like it. I can live with that. I know some who looked at it and hate it. But I also know that 99% of the people don't know anything about it. And that's what scares me the most. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Okay, so, seeing no, no other comments from the audience, thank you, Mike. Thank you, everybody. Any further discussion from the committee? Responses to anything you heard, questions that have now arisen?
If I, if I could briefly follow up, just in general, on the Common Core subject, which has come up a few times. Every other month I meet with a group of students from around the district, the northeast, around the entire region, the Northeast Regional Student Advisory Council. And it's part of a state program under the Department of Education, where students get together and discuss the issues, and we work on a project every week. And we met every month, or every season. And we met last Friday, and we all sat around a table, probably about 30 kids from districts, from Marblehead to Lynn, all over, and all over the state, really, ideas are brought back. And I was curious about how people were taking in Common Core in their districts, because most of the students are very involved in their school committees, like I was, they were hearing the discussions that were happening, and seeing what impact it was going to be having on their district. And, so I asked, I was curious, I said, "What do you think Common Core is gonna do to your district?" And I, first I just said, "How many of you think it's gonna be good for your district?" There was one kid that raised his hand. I said, "How many of you think it's gonna be bad for your district?" And every other kid there, probably about 19, 20 kids, raised their hand. So I think it just shows us that maybe we should be looking at this, and really seeing what impact it might have on our district.
Thank you, Chase.
Whether or not we like the Common Core, it's here, and for the foreseeable future, it's going to stay. And whether or not we like the new evaluation standards, or we like what it's doing to our curriculum, we have to align ourselves, because we've been told by the state that we have to align ourselves. And so I think that we are, that this presentation has, is trying to do that in such a way that we don't become either top-heavy or remove the magic from teaching, because you're right, as teachers, there is a certain magic to teaching. There is a slow down and take an extra week if your students aren't catching a specific subject, or if you particularly like a specific subject, or, you know, your class is enjoying a specific subject, that you shouldn't be, you know, you should be able to slow down and really have them understand fully what they're doing. And we want to continue that, and, because teachers are what makes the students. Having good teachers and having good curriculums is what makes the students. And so I want to applaud all of the teachers who have been working with the math coach, because, as somebody said earlier, it is about the work that the teachers put in.
That said, my understanding, I don't completely understand the Common Core, I'm not sure I ever will, actually, but I do know that curriculum frameworks, whatever that is, whatever it's called, it will, it has been other things, it is currently the Common Core, and it will be something else in the future. My understanding of our district is that we have deficiencies in our curriculum framework maps. What, I am not an educator, I've already confessed to that, you elected me anyway. But my understanding is, there is a, we have an issue as a district. We might have an issue as a state with the frameworks, or the Common Core, as it's called, but we have an issue right now, as a district. We've, this issue's been here long before there were the words "Common Core." And I think, in a lot of ways, we have a responsibility to try to put curriculum in, or help the teachers take that load off those people that are in front of our kids all day, and writing curriculum at night. And my sense is, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is an assistance, that's assistance for that, not taking away, I think it gives you more time for the magic, rather than taking it away. The Common Core might take it away, I don't know. But it gives framework for curriculum. Please correct my thinking.
As well as a huge resource, somebody to go to who has a real expertise, and is working across the three schools. I, I-
Be thorough.
When I, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask one other thing. So, I, right now, this is, I mean, curriculum in our district is sort of a grassroots effort, right? You have Celeste responsible for it, but then you're, we're calling on all of the teachers that are already having full-time jobs, plus somebody who has a piece of their job, to create something that hasn't existed around here, I won't say ever, but for a long time, at least in a consistent fashion. So I do, correct, I mean, help me out to see where this is a limiter, not a-
Growth.
A growth, thank you.
An enhancer.
Right. That's, that's exactly where I am at. I mean, I'm frankly surprised that the teachers aren't embracing this. To me, it doesn't mean we're, you know, oh, Common Core is the way to go, and this directly impacts that. It's more like giving a department chair, so to speak, in the elementary grade levels to provide specific instruction and guidance in math and ELA. And, and like Deb said, I think that will take the load off of the teachers, it will better prepare them by looking across, you know, multiple teachers, what work, what works, what doesn't work, and then provide more consistent approach across classrooms, as well as buildings. And then, you know, I agree, a trend isn't, you know, one set of scores, but it's also at some point too late to react, and if we see something that's worked, why not start moving with it? This is a phased approach, it's at the elementary school. I think even back when we reviewed the MCAS scores, we were talking about this. And regardless of these scores, we were saying we need some support at the elementary level to bring the scores up.
Pressure. I move that the Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School Committee vote to approve the creation of the positions of Elementary ELA and Math Education Coordinators, as presented in the attached job descriptions.
Second? It's been seconded. Further discussion?
One of the things I heard was talking about aligning, alignment with the Common Core, and what I've heard, even before I ran for school committee, was what we were looking for was alignment between the three elementary schools, that there was a disparity, sometimes, you know, it just, everything wasn't being presented equally. I think this is a great opportunity for the three schools to combine and work together under one coordinator. And I've heard from a lot of people in town that this is something they've been looking for. So I think it's a great step toward that.
Yeah. I would agree with that, and I think that there have been some-
We are ready.
Okay. Do you want to-
No, go ahead, Bill. Please finish. Bill, you have to go.
Somebody in the audience talked about the effect, or where we see the effect in terms of our, our graduates and our high school students. And this is, in some ways, difficult to say, but frankly, I get complaints from parents, from teachers, it's not from teachers, from parents, from students, and people in the community, about things like the need for tutoring, and students having to take classes again, courses again, that they took at the high school when they get to college. I think that the kinds of changes that we're, that the superintendent and the leadership team are proposing are, are really designed over a long period of time, a lot of thought has gone into this after the last, over the last couple of years, to correct some deficiencies that evolved over an even longer period of time. And that we have to make some changes if we're going to help our students do as well as they could do. And, so I, I support this.
Bill?
Yes, I'd like to tell the audience that I have read every single one of those letters, I think there's something like 12 of them. They're long, and I have to use my finger to do it. But I did read them, and I think what I get out of all of this is a resistance to change. Now, now, you shake your head, but let me finish. The resistance to change, I guess, I hold a chair on this committee as the curmudgeon, because I don't like change. And so the joke is that if you can get by me, okay, then probably you've got something going. And I think this is probably a good gamble. I don't claim to know anything about Common Core, I'd like to learn, I'd like to find somebody that knows what they're talking about, especially in the math. But I think that this is, the data that's coming up, that was presented to me, tells me that at least this is a beginning, and it should be implemented, because we have to do something, and I am not an educator by any stretch of the imagination. So I just look at it as a functional sort of problem. And now, the young lady said, "We, we need data points, we gotta study it, and study it, and study it, and get a trend, and do some trend analysis." Well, when you do a pilot program, doing trend analysis doesn't really apply, unless you have some prediction that you are, a goal that you're producing. So, at least this is a forward indicator. To me, it's a forward indicator of what can be done. I don't know what went into the making up, I don't know how they selected those classes, or those pilots, or whatever, I call it a pilot program, for lack of a better word. And I know that you, you people are obviously here en masse to, to, to express your opinion. And I, it's not, I don't think anybody is not listening to your opinion. I think that we're just trying to move forward a little bit, and I don't think it's a reflection of any of your efforts. But, you know, putting that extra, getting that little extra efficiency out of that raises up the, the scores, and I guess that's the only indicator that we have as to how we're, what we're producing. And, and students are our product, our product, excuse me. I think that it is a good thing to go forward with this and see where it goes. Again, that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Bill. Janice?
I would like to echo the things that have been said, and as well say that I have also read all of the emails that have come into my email box. I look at this as an expansion of the Math Coach Program, and I think it's going to be good. So.
Okay. Chase?
When, when I was watching the presentation, I, it did occur to me what a lot of the opinions that were reflected were, that it seemed to me that it would make the job easier for a lot of teachers. The only place where a concern came up for me was during Citizens' Concerns, when it seemed like we heard from teachers who this would be affecting, who were saying that it wouldn't make their job easier. So I would just be curious to learn more from them, just taking a little time to hear from them about what, whether this job, whether this would be made easier or not. I just think it's important to hear from the people that it's gonna be affecting, and from the sample that we heard, it seems like it isn't gonna make their jobs easier, like I, I believed during the presentation.
Thank you, Chase. Kathy?
Is it too late?
No, no, go ahead.
Never for you, Kathy. I'm sorry, don't mean to interrupt this meeting. I'm Kathy O'Shea-
We've got about five more minutes, and then we'll, we'll come to a conclusion.
I live at 4 Howard Street, and I have been in the district for 26 years. I'm currently here, 1st grade at Buker School. And Dr. Harvey, thank you for the time on Monday, that you gave the teachers to meet with you. Unfortunately, I think a lot of teachers were unable to attend Monday, because it was such short notice. So I think what I would love to see, because I echo everything Sue Lucia said, Sue, thank you, and Bridget, I think the piece that's missing here is, the teachers haven't been asked, "What do we need? What do we need in our classroom?" I don't need more administrators, I respect administrators, I welcome administrators into my classroom. I need more bodies, I need more support. We talk about RTI, we need to get these kids when they're young, and we need to intervene, and we need to meet them where they are. I am not a miracle worker. I would love to have sent emails, I didn't have time to send emails and really process what I was thinking, because we're so busy sending emails to parents, making sure we're communicating what went on in the classroom, what their kids need, getting ready for the next day, looking at work, collecting data, assessing, planning, reassessing, there's just so much. And I think that what I would ask the school committee tonight is to pause, to come to the schools, to ask the teachers, give us enough time. I think tonight, we did not know about all of this, and I think communication needs to be opened up. I think we do need to be heard. I know a lot of teachers couldn't come tonight, it's Holy Thursday, teachers were concerned about that, that they could not attend, they would like to have been here. So, I know I speak not for everyone in the district, but I know I speak for a lot of voices. I really encourage you to just slow down tonight, talk to the teachers, ask what we need, and to really think about, as Sue said, becoming a district that is so top-heavy. I thank you all for your time, greatly appreciate it, I don't know how you do it. Get into our classrooms, we'd love to see you, and if you can get in and see what's going on, I, I think you'd see that it's not the administration need right now. Let's get these kids and give them what they, they need, and that would be, you know, a couple of extra teaching assistants would be wonderful. We don't have, this is my last point, we have Language Arts teaching assistants, when we're talking about giving interventions to students in the classroom, and I speak for the primary grades, we don't have math support. So if I have a group of students that are at 6, and I do, you know, different levels, they could be kindergarten up until 6th grade math levels, I am responsible for servicing all these kids. I would love more teaching assistants in my classroom, to really meet these kids where they are, and give them the services that they deserve. So, thank you for your time.
Yep, Jenny Rohrgerd, 50 Hamilton Avenue. Just one quick thing in response to kids having to retake classes that they took in high school, I don't know if this is to what she was referring, but I know some of the Ivies and other colleges are now rejecting AP credits. So I have a kid with AP credits who might need to take them over. I didn't think that's what you were talking about, but that really stinks.
Yeah, it does.
It does.
No, that wasn't what I was talking about, I, I-
Okay. As a parent, my one concern with, and I'm not an educator, in terms of curriculum consistency, I understand that, you know, maybe there's other ways of doing it, maybe not, but totally I get the idea of curriculum consistency, especially with three elementary schools. My big concern is the data-driven, and, I'm sorry, I don't really speak well in public. My concern is the data-driven analysis and supervisory authoritative responsibility in these positions over the teachers, because all I can picture is five Dolores Umbrages walking through our halls with clipboards, draining the life out of our educators. You know, curriculum, yes, co- You know, curriculum, yes, coaches, yes, all that stuff, yes. Data analyst to help Dr. Bowler analyze these mounds of testing data you need, yes, you need a data analyst. But to embody all of those responsibilities in one person and then give them the club to hit the teachers over the head that they're trying to help, like I said, it's Dolores Umbridge in my head. Please don't do that. Thank you.
We, some of us were sitting here saying, "Who the heck's Dolores Umbridge?" Those of us that have not read Harry Potter, I apologize, we didn't get the reference. We get it now.
Okay, so...
Can we go?
Yeah, let's move this, so...
I would like, one more thing. Kathy, you know, I love you to death. One of the things that you said was that, you know, you didn't know about this. The leadership teams have been asking us for three years for these positions. So I assume that they've spoken to you, this has come from them. So we're hearing, yes, this is what we want, please, this is what we've asked for.
Sheila, I don't speak for everyone. I really have no knowledge, no knowledge. So, I don't speak for everyone. And I think, I can speak for the teachers at Cutler. We met at the end of the day today, and I'd say 80% of the teachers knew nothing about this actually.
So it hasn't been discussed in the last three years? This isn't something that Brian, or Jen, or whomever?
You've been working on four years, we've been keeping it up. It's 43 weeks now.
Yeah, I know that.
Oh, to the, to the mic, just people, people do watch on TV.
Yeah, and they can't hear you.
All right, no, I think, I think we, is there anything to add, other than, because we do need to keep the job...
All I'll say is, I think the majority of the teachers were not aware of that this was a plan, and that it had been something people had been asking for, for three years. We weren't aware.
Okay.
The first I heard of it was a week ago.
Okay, microphone.
A week ago, we had a negotiations meeting, and it was brought up there. And that was the first that I had heard of it. And that was a week ago, Monday, maybe? It was just a little over a week ago. So that, most of the teachers at Buca that I work with, it was all new to them.
All right, I think we're ready to take a vote.
I just wonder if there's anything Superintendent Harvey or Assistant Superintendent Bowler has to say, if there's anything to...
I mean, they've spoken on the topic.
Let's just vote.
So let's, so all those in favor of approving the two positions?
Says ELA and math now.
ELA and math.
They're so far away from that.
Say aye. Raise your hand. Okay, so that's six, four, and those opposed? Anybody abstain? Okay. One abstain? So it passes? For the two positions, six, one, and two abstentions. All right, so we're going to keep moving. I mean, if, you guys are welcome to stay, or if we need a moment to break, that's fine, too.
Last day of school?
What's that?
We hope the last day of school.
Where are we?
Yeah.
I'm confused.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Yeah.
Sure. Is that possible? This is my first school committee meeting, Deb Safford, I live in Hamilton. And I'm just curious about what just went on here, because I heard a lot of people talking and coming here. I know there's been a lot of letters written, and there's been acknowledgements, and not everyone knows everything about, say, Common Core, but they hope to get to know. And I would encourage you to make sure you know, because in fact, what you said is not true, that you do have the power at the local level to reject it and to push it up through to the state level, and the states can reject it. It's happened in Indiana, it's happening in other states, PBD is rejecting it. You start at the local level, which is you guys. The school committee is supposed to be representing the people, the citizens, not the superintendent. He actually works for you, and you work for us, the people. And that's democracy, right? We don't elect our people to go and vote by party line when they go to Congress, right? We want them to think independently and represent the people. And I have to say, I'm kind of amazed that not one person listened to the teachers and thought that they should pause. Nobody, you guys, I think, came in here with your decisions made to support your superintendent. It just strikes me, I mean, how can, after everything that was heard, there wasn't a reflection that there should be a consideration for that? It just, it just appears to me, as the outsider coming in here, that I wonder if the representatives, you guys, heard the people, because I think there's a lot of really unhappy people. And I just want to make sure that we understand that the processes, that you guys work for the people. And, you know, Dr. Harvey needs to make sure he listens to the people as well. It just seems like no one's listening. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move along. The committee reports are next, I think there's... Oh, okay. The next item is the consent agenda. The only item on the consent agenda are the minutes from April 3rd.